The meeting of Street West City Council now being called to order. Councilman Flur will give the invitation and Councilman Bradford will lead us into place.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to join here together to conduct business for the city of Shreveport. I give you thanks, oh Lord, for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. I ask forgiveness of our sins. Lead us, guide us, and direct us. And oh God, give us compassion, give us wisdom, and please give us grace, for it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's face the flag, Professor Saloon, and let us repeat in prayer to the uncles.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Flur, we call it order.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Bradford.
Here.
Councilman James.
Present.
Councilman Corby.
Present.
Councilman Flur.
Present.
Councilwoman Leach, and Councilman Foote.
Here. Tomorrow, intent on motion to approve the minutes of the...
You will have one.
You will have one.
I will.
From you? Does any council member have been awarded recognition, distinction, or best, at the time? The... Mayor Tyler, you have been awarded recognition.
Not today. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Green, or someone from... We have anything for Professor Sanders, anyone? Or Mike makes his trail?
Do you have anything?
I do. We can talk about it after. We require to hold a public hearing tomorrow, August 59th, or 2:18. Mr. Crawford, will you continue, please?
Yes, sir. Administration will have a presentation from Engineer.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, will there be any legislation to be had tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And we have or do not have any requests?
We do have a request to speak on item 59 and 60 by Mr. Bruce Sowerd.
Mr. Rob Bruce Sowerd?
Thank you, council members. Rob Bruce Sowerd, 451 San Antonio, Shreveport, Louisiana. Items number 59 and 60 deal with annexation of parts of our city, Providence West subdivision into the city. And what I'd like to do is say to y'all that we shouldn't be annexing more parts of the city into Shreveport till we can take care of the parts of the city that we already have in Shreveport. And I showed y'all pictures of grass in the middle of Shreveport up to our eyeballs, okay? And I want to say publicly that I don't fault the Public Works Department because they were working hard, but they have limited staff, and it's very hard to get to all of that grass. So I think that it ought to be included in the budget item, that we take care of what we got first, but by adding some budgetary money to help facilitate this kind of programs with grass cutting that the Department of Public Works goes through. Also, I know that out there on I-49, all those trees that were planted through Shreveport Green, I think we're running into issues with that area getting mowed too, by having to hire private contractors to do that. So before we annex other parts of subdivisions into the city of Shreveport, we need to take care of what we got already in the city of Shreveport. Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Sowerd?
Yes, sir.
Do you actually see a conflict of annexation in describing what you describe as neglecting mowing parts of the city?
That's what I said. I don't think you ought to annex those areas in if you can't take care of what's already in the city. I think I was pretty clear about saying that, Mr. Bradford.
No. What I was referring to is that we're talking, in my opinion, apples and oranges in the fact that when you say we need to award more resources to what we're doing when annexation is not going to take to the resources that are now being proposed to annex.
Do you really believe that?
We can do, if we're committed and if we have the will, we can move money to do what we do. But me personally does not see the proposal of 59 and weed cutting, because I mean, the weed cutting is all over. I can get, you show me those pictures, I can show you pictures. And I submitted over the weekend, and I think administration have responded to most of them, that...
Kind of like the street program, Mr. Bradford?
Like the what program?
Like the street improvement program.
Well, I mean, again, we, I don't want to get into a this or that, or try to convolute something that's... We can look at parts of the city and say, this need addressing, this need addressing. But I'm saying, but to hinder, in my opinion, something that would benefit the city in the long run in lieu of saying, let's move with grass cutting, when that will extend way beyond what this proposition would do.
Well, I think if we break it down to its simplest form, you grow the city bigger, Public Works Department has more grass to cut, more streets to maintain, more everything. And unless you increase their budget significantly, they're going to be using the same manpower to do not what's existing now, but a bigger area.
It would take, and this is my last thing, I am sympathetic to what you're saying as relates to some areas of the city that is more unaddressed. I'm conscious as well as the resources that we have available to address some of these issues. But I'm saying that the cost of what I see as the proposition, part of 59, would not be a substitute for what I see need to be done. I mean, I'm, you know, my area encompass a whole lot that needs to be done. But I'm saying I would not want to hinder something that I see in the long run as progress in lieu of, let's hold up on everything annexation and anything that may cost us city funds until we can get these issues addressed. It'll take us years.
Well, I think those who are going to be on the city council better get ready to face those issues because those issues are coming to the front. People are tired of paying taxes and not having basic services provided. And when you're going to expand the city and make those governmental bodies do more with less, I think you need to revisit that, rethink that, and come to the conclusion that we've got to act smarter, we've got to plan better, and we've got to have people that understand what the real meaning of economic development is, and what the real meaning of taxation is. I mean, you know, you guys derive your taxes from sales tax, right?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay. So how much sales tax are you going to generate out there in West Providence?
Property taxes is where we're going to get revenues from.
And then, and who collects those property taxes?
What's that?
Who gets those property taxes?
We do.
Shreveport gets some, but mostly revenues come from sales tax.
Yeah, but a significant portion. I mean, the second largest portion is from property tax.
And then, if you dare to go to property taxes, I would suggest that District C and South generate almost 50% of the total taxes in property in this city. That was a figures that were provided four years ago from the Tax Assessor's Office. So when you're looking at almost 50%, and you can't cut the grass, let's revisit it. Let's revisit it. Let's act smarter. Let's take care of what we got before we start developing new subdivisions, new areas downtown. We've got areas where people live. They live, they've lived there 30, 40 years, and we can't get the grass cut? Come on. Real basic. And if it's property tax or sales tax, it all goes into the pot. Those guys right there, Public Works, don't have enough to hire the people to do the job. They can't, they can't grow their operations without more money. So I'm not faulting them. I've said that, and I hope I make myself clear. I'm not faulting Public Works. I'm faulting the fact that you can't keep stretching these departments and expect them to do more unless there's more allocations in your budget. And it's up to you guys to figure out how to, what to, how to budget the taxpayers' money.
You have to press your button.
Yeah, have councilman Lynch just pay for it.
Mr. Bruce Sowerd?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you coming down and making the observations that you're making. It's not something that, certainly I've said, you know, in the last four years, three and a half years, but as you can see, it's a growing problem, and it's starting to affect areas now that maybe before were not necessarily affected by some of the lack of basic city services.
Yes, ma'am. That's absolutely correct.
But what I will say, because I've heard it from the mayor's mouth myself, to the Public Works Department when I was chairing that committee, that whatever funds were necessary, that needed to be, whatever they needed, if they said that they needed it, she was going to make sure that those resources were there. Now, I'm paraphrasing, but the gist of it was that, get it done, you know, and whatever resources are needed to get it done, that's what we're going to do. So, but I've also heard from the director and others, when, even when I raise concerns about, you know, some things that are happening or not happening in my own district, I hear the, what I call an excuse, that they don't have enough money, which I don't buy, that there are not enough people, or we can't get the people because nobody want to work in the sun for $10 an hour, okay? That's what, you know, I've heard of, which I think is another excuse. And so, you know, it's not rocket science, and I'm not saying anything that I have not said in committee meetings before, and that I've not said from this floor before, it's not rocket science. We can do it, but it has to be the will to do, to run that system efficiently and effectively. We have the resources. We don't have a resource problem. So I don't want you to leave here thinking that the city does not, or has not committed the funds, from my understanding and from where I see it, that we have not committed the funds for it to be done. Now, the implementation and the execution, I think, is where there's an issue, okay? So, you know, I know, and, you know, it's probably enough blame to go around, but that's not what the issue is. The money and the resources is not it, from where I sit.
How many taxpayers owe back taxes and liens? And, you know, are we collecting all of the taxes that we should? And what, how much money is sitting out there from back taxes that could be used for, to help supplement some of this? Do you know?
That I do not know, but I will say, there's not a resource issue in terms of...
Okay.
Now, the mayor and CIO may say something different, I don't know. I don't look at the numbers every day. Or, I mean, are we short?
I mean, I will speak whenever I'm allowed to. Am I allowed to speak?
Yes, ma'am. I just didn't want to get off track from the...
And I didn't, I didn't think we were going to hold conversations on public, with the public comments, but since I'm asked by a councilwoman, certainly I want to honor her. We have both. We have a resource problem, because we don't have, we don't have limitless dollars in this city. But we also have a lack of personnel, because we cannot keep people, those positions, we just can't keep people in them. We got, we tried to hire a bunch of people last Thursday at our job fair. They, many times, they either can't pass a drug test, or they walk off the job. So, you know, we're hiring all the people that we can hire to take care of the problem. We have a plan, and we're executing on the plan as quickly as we possibly can. But you got to be reasonable. If the people are not willing to do the work, they leave the job for whatever reason, I mean, we're trying to hire people. We really are.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. They're trying to hire, and if we can't, if we don't have the money to hire those people, then why would we want to go and access...
No, 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 no. No, no. We're trying to hire, with some of the money we have, we're trying to hire people. And we can hire them, and then they'll work for a week or two, and then they'll leave. I mean, that's, that's part of the problem.
I apologize. The point I really wanted to go to was that if we can't hire enough or keep enough people that are currently working, why do we want to go add another section of town? Are we, the problem compounds itself.
I'm just responding to the councilwoman's inch. I'm not into all that.
But anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that from what I said.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, but if you keep doing the same thing, you're going to keep getting the same results. So if that's not working, then what's your, as one of my friends says, what's your, don't have a plan B, have another plan A.
And that's why, that's why you see me in front of y'all.
So I understand what you're saying. So I understand what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's it.
Thank you.
We have no executive appointments to be...
No, we don't.
Comments? Are she speaking on the board?
Lady Klein speak.
Oh, they, okay. There are no items under consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Crawford, let's continue with item to be adopted.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Consent agenda legislation under items to be adopted, resolution 96 to clear certain city of Shreveport, Louisiana, supplies, materials, and equipment, specifically vehicles to be surplus and to be authorized, the purchase agent or his designee to sell, and dispose of said surplus property by public auction.
Okay.
You ready to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage or which will require only one reading. Resolution 95 authorizes the mayor to make application to the U.S. Department of Justice to seek funds for the project Safe Neighborhood Grants. This is a U.S. Marshals Western District grant for $159,488, which the Shreveport Police Department will also be the fiscal agent to.
Good discussion on 95.
So, Chairman, I don't have a discussion on 95, and I may have been, I don't know, doing something. But did we have adding items to the agenda?
We don't have any items.
I do. I had something that I needed to have added. Did you? Huh?
We did. Refraining.
Refraining. Yeah, I had a resolution that I wanted to have added. Shreveport native Kenny Simpson, graduate of Fair Park, is being inducted into the Arkletex Sports Museum of Champions in Shreveport at the Convention Center on August the 3rd. And I believe those, the organizers are requesting a resolution recognizing that honor and to designate it as Kenny Simpson Day in Shreveport. So I wanted to see about adding that to the agenda for tomorrow.
Have you submitted that to the clerk?
Uh-huh.
Okay. You're welcome. I mean, it's all for consideration. That's fine. To be, to be added tomorrow? Kenneth Simpson?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're under introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to August 14th. Resolution 97 authorizes the mayor to execute and accept an active donation between the city of Shreveport and WIVI Land Development LLC herein after called owner and acting herein through David M. Alexander, manager for the water and sewer main extension and related facilities to service Lucian Fields Estates Phase One, Unit B. Resolution 98 authorizes a facility servitude for the purposes of locating or constructing a facility across, in, over, or under city-owned property at the future site of the field operations and customer services for the downtown, I'm sorry, for the Department of Water and Sewer located between 5226 Monkhouse Drive and 5122 Hollywood Avenue, and to authorize the mayor to execute said facility servitude with network communication.
Good discussion on those two. And, no, Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Moving right along. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to August the 14th, 2018. Ordinance 61 amends and reenacts certain provisions of Chapter 10 in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to alcohol permits. Ordinance number 62 amends various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance 63 is a zoning case C-31-18. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located at 1842 Barton Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to C-3 General Commercial District. Ordinance 64 is a zoning case number C-32-18. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Esplanade Avenue, 2,770 feet north of Greenwood Road, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from OS and R-17 Open Space and Single Family Residential District to C-UV PUD Urban Village Commercial District with Planning Unit Development. And ordinance number 65 is zoning case C-34-18. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Wallace Lake Road, approximately 2,400 feet north of Southern Loop, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-2 PUD Multi-Family Residential District with Planning Unit Development to R-2 PUD Multi-Family Residential District with Planning Unit Development.
Councilman Lynch.
Can you kind of break that down in English for me? What are we trying to do?
I'm going to let the city attorney take this. Basically, there are certain businesses, such as movie theaters and non-traditional businesses, that we do not have something written in the current ordinance that allows them to have an exception for an alcohol permit, but the state does, and so this reconciles those two things to be in line with the state. Is that right, Mr. Bradford? That's correct. Okay. So we will have a provision for those businesses wanting to seek an alcohol permit outside those non-customery businesses to be able to do that in line with the current state application to do so.
So now, where is this allowing me to have what, what where?
So, for instance, if you're a...
That I don't have now.
Right now, movie theaters are not allowed to have a, so allowed to serve alcohol. Their, the state does have provisions that allow it. The city does not have, currently have that allowance. Right now, in order, Robinson Film Center is a good example. Right now, they have to have an actual restaurant in there in order to serve. This will allow it to occur at a concession, a separate open concession area for the patrons of a movie theater that may not be, for instance, the Robinson.
Okay, so does that mean you can take your glass of wine into the movie?
It means you can purchase it at the movie theater and take it into the movie theater, into the screening area.
As opposed to at Robinson Film Center, they have a restaurant that's on-site where you can bring a glass of wine in. But, but if you're going to a regular movie theater that doesn't have a restaurant, they just have like a concession stand, those people will now be able to sell, I mean, would be able to apply for a license to be able to sell, you know, an alcoholic product.
So we might get an eye pick here?
I don't, I don't want to speculate. It's just, it is a gap. It legally be possible. It is a gap that we're trying to close.
And I sent this out to council members last week.
Yeah.
It's, we've had a request from a local movie theater to look into this, and our ABO folks, along with the city attorney's office, have investigated it, and it does put us more in line as we continue to go through Chapter 10, puts us in line with what the state requires of concessions.
Well, not only that, but...
Yeah, you do have to have a separate concession window.
Yeah, but, I mean, but also what they're doing in larger cities. I mean, it's, you know, you have food, and you can have...
Are we talking Tinseltown, other, other world?
Yeah.
So they can be integrated with children, with young people? If they go into the, into the actual movie theater or bar?
It's like going to, it's like going to another form of entertainment. If you go to a ballgame with your family, you can buy a beer. And so you'd be able to buy a beer at a movie theater or, you know.
Ultimately, as a citizen, you have the responsibility to consume alcohol responsibly.
Yeah.
So.
Councilman Dick?
Well, I'd like one thing just relative to that last thing. Obviously, the applicant would have to be, I mean, a group like Tinseltown, I don't know their business model exactly, but I'm not sure every family-friendly type of national brand is going to go out and push for this. Now, they might, but I think it's going to be in concert with, I mean, we're not requiring people to do it. But yes, in other cities, they're usually independent films or non-national brand name establishments. But that being said, in this, so I had a phone call from some woman last week, or maybe the week before, and she was going to reach out to you and Cisco about, she's a vendor of a champagne bar.
Yeah. Okay, she has a trailer.
She has a trailer. She's got a similar, I'm not saying it's not similar to this, but a similar issue in terms of the way she, you know, solicits...
The way her business model works.
Is not in line with the way the provisions are. And...
Well, the, I think it's safer to say, her current business model is in line with what's allowed, but it doesn't really make sense for her to expand and grow. She needs a little modification in how she'd be able to receive, because currently, she's like rental only. Like, you rent her to come to a party, and then you buy, you provide the alcohol for her to serve at your party, you know?
Yeah, somebody else has to have the license.
Yeah, so she's not actually vending the product herself. She's just, yeah, they're sort of, it's sort of a presentation thing, but...
So does that mean, yes, she has contacted somebody and...
No, not us yet. I'll reach out to, if I get a contact.
I don't know if Agent Cisco or anybody...
She hasn't talked to us, not yet. But I look at that as a separate issue.
Okay.
Because even this, and Karen just reminded me too, is, even this permit is conditional on what, on state approval. So even if this exception will, you know, if Business A applies for it here and it's approved, then it's still conditioned on approval from the state.
And I think she has some structural issues at the state side as well.
Right.
I don't think her issue, it's not an incapability of city versus state. Hers is her whole business, her potential next business model is fairly limited. Again, thank you.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Ordinance is on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 56 to revise certain provisions in Chapter 25, 26, and 78 of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to obtaining permits for use of and encroachments on city public right-of-way and on city-owned property. Ordinance 57 amends the 2018 budget of the general fund appropriating the funds authorized therein. This is for a $93,000 payment for the repair of Engine 6 for the fire department. We just need to put it in the revenue and the expenditure side. Ordinance 58, amending sections of Article 8A7 of Chapter 90, traffic and vehicles of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to broken meters, overtime parking, and permit parking. This is a legislation brought by the DDA.
Just to note there is an amendment on Ordinance 56, and some clarification, the explanations contained on the amendment.
Ordinance 59 is an annexation tag number 18-03. This is an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Shreveport for the Providence West Subdivision Development in Section 19, T-16 North, R-13 West, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. And ordinance number 60 authorizes and providing for an encroachment on a portion of city public dedication located on Greg Street.
All right. Councilman Dick?
Okay. So, obviously, thank y'all very much for those that were able to come to our special meeting to get Ordinance 60 introduced. City Attorney, we are still planning on doing this a week from Friday.
That's correct.
Okay. So the intent is to hold another special meeting Friday at 3:00 PM, whatever, this Friday at 3:00 PM, right? That's, this Friday is 14th day.
Right.
26th, right? 27th? Okay. Question for Public Safety Committee. I have, I'm getting some, a little bit of feedback from the city that they're not, the administration, that they're not... that they're not, the administration, that they're not a hundred percent on board on about this ordinance fifty-six. Now, I'm not trying to cause friction. I think there's some issue about some requirements about painting streets and curbsides and something like that. And if I'm the only person that's not trying to cause something here.
No, we haven't heard anything on that.
I'm not, heard anything.
Have you? No, fifty-six is essentially moving a lot of different moving parts that are in the current ordinance to one place, so they're easily located.
Okay, hold on.
Are you talking about fifty-eight?
Am I talking about the wrong ordinance? I may be talking about fifty-eight. Sorry, again.
Okay, you're talking about the DDA ordinance.
The DDA parking zones and enforcement and some requirements for the city to, to, I mean, I know, and listen, I got feedback from somebody directly that, you know, we're not going to go around painting five different colors all over the streets.
I was in a meeting where there was some discussion of the city needed to paint some of the curbs for these specific areas, and I don't think that, that had been done, and this was three or four weeks ago. But if there, if that's not something that's going to be done quickly, I don't want to put something into place where somebody's in violation, but they may not know they're in violation.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think this has to be very clear. I have no problem postponing it a little bit if that's what we need to do. But, but I think, I think DDA parking and, and-
Sure.
Our group has got to all be in sync on this.
Absolutely.
Lorenzo Lee, four sixteen Cotton, uh, with DDA and parking. We're a little lost on what the confusion is. It sounds like you're referring to painting curves to indicate that they have to be paid for with the parking app, because there's no meter.
Some reserve zones and-
But there's no, no change in reference that'll impact that. I don't believe the parking ordinance was passed a couple of years back, so that's already in effect. The parking ordinance that approves, uh, parking with the app, payment with the app.
But what, if I pull into a space that does not have a meter, and I can't clearly see a sign, and there's no paint on the curb that makes it look special, then when I get a ticket, I'm going to pick up the phone and call Councilman Bowman and say, "I got a ticket, there wasn't a meter, and I didn't even, I don't even know what this parking app is." I understand that already happens now, because I've sent, I've called you about some things and sent some people to you. But, but with these, I, I want to be sure that these changes don't create an additional communication issue between our parkers and-
I got you.
And what's legal. Because we, I mean, we're throwing a lot of changes out there. We're modernizing what's good. I see it in other cities. They want to be sure that our citizens understand when they come and, and park, especially in one of these areas that may be a little more outlined than the central business.
Right, there's really nothing new. There's some update to the permit parking ordinance, uh, as it's currently written, to clear up some confusion in that regard. Otherwise, there's just verbiage that's not there in reference to defining a meter that is broken or out of order, out of service. That verbiage is not there currently, so that's being added just for clarification.
Does this include handicap parking changes as well?
Um, it, it actually includes overtime, clarification on overtime enforcement. There would be a change in terms of, right now, it just says you have to leave your parking space, but it doesn't define how far that may be. So from an enforcement standpoint, someone could potentially swap. Well, what's going on now is people are just swap spaces. That may be a handicap space as well. They may just swap spaces, so those spaces end up being occupied all day. The objective, of course, is to recycle it for someone else that may need to utilize it. There are a number of complaints regarding the handicap spaces specifically around City Hall, and we're trying to address that, address that from an enforcement standpoint. But it wouldn't require additional signage. There would be an education component, what we've done in the past. Say, for instance, regarding the parking app, uh, we have issued warnings. And then, we issued warnings for about a year with reference to the parking app. Now, we issue tickets. However, if someone calls the office, they want an explanation, they're unclear about it, I got a citation, but there was no meter, that gives us an opportunity to explain to them, you know, that they are obligated to pay, but with the app. Uh, and we'll convert that citation into a warning. So we'll have documented that, in fact, they've been issued at least one warning on that particular license plate. So going forward, uh, if they have received the same infraction, we can be sure that they've been warned about it, and they are knowledgeable of that ordinance. So we would probably follow similar procedure.
So there's, you're not aware of anything that you're waiting on traffic engineering to paint any curve?
We are, but that, that's based on the ordinance that's already been passed regarding, uh, the parking app.
Uh, I got you, okay. So you're saying we're already behind on a part of the-
This doesn't have anything to do with the, the painting with the curves?
Because the red, the zone, and mine was a little bit more to do with these, the zone passes.
The permit parking perhaps?
Yeah, permit parking, yeah. Now, under the permit parking passes, somebody parks in an area and they hang a permit or however they do it, right?
The permit is actually a digital permit. They'll utilize their plate to initiate that permit. When we search to see whether or not a permit is being utilized, we'll just run their plate.
Okay. And they, in that case, could be in a, a parking app spot, or they could be in a pay-for-meter spot and still be granted parking under their permit parking, right?
No, it's based on a zone.
Right.
So the permitting areas are zoned differently.
No, but assuming they're, if I'm just never been here, and I pull up and the guy in front of me, that's, appears to have an expired meter or whatever, and I pull him behind him, I don't know if that guy's actually has a permit fee or he just has an expired meter. Correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. He's a parker, we'll not know.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I, I thought, the thing I had to report I got was it something to do with parking, painting curbsides, but that's unrelated.
That is unrelated. We can discuss that, um, if you've got some questions, we're happy to address them. And just contact us at the DDA or whatever regarding that issue.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
I'd ask that we would consider postponing this tomorrow and add it to the upcoming Public Safety Committee meeting, so we can vet it a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay. If that's our discussion, Councilwoman Lynch?
Yes, Ordinance sixty. Trying to understand what we're doing here. So is there any monetary consideration?
Sixty.
And if there's not, why not? On cases like this, where we have, um, an encroachment? I don't know what's been out normal. I guess I'm just trying to understand.
No, I mean, there's not, not to our office, been any consideration of paying for the twenty-two inches. It's really a function of whether or not, you know, we derive any kind of economic benefit from the business operating in the manner he wants. I think it does make a material difference on whether or not he can expand into and have that patio area on his, um, under his current drawings. But, um, not, not to my knowledge.
And at the special-
Is that?
Go ahead.
Okay, go on.
I was going to say, at the special meeting, I think we were provided information that in the coming months, that utility that is actually being encroached upon is going to be relocated in some of the sewer consent decree work.
Okay, but it's still, it's still land and property, right? That we're, that we're, are we giving it away? Are we just saying you can have use of it without any consideration until such point?
In my recollection is that the city asked for this from the property owners thirty, forty years ago. I don't remember the timeframe. Both the golf course and the gas station and this property granted them a rider, a wider right-of-way.
Okay.
Then subsequently, the two adjacent properties, one being Corby's Golf Course and the other being the gas station, were allowed to get theirs back. And this is the one twenty-two inch strip that this property never requested it back.
Okay.
I, I think that's the history. I may have that wrong, but there's something about at some point granting a wider easement or encroachment back to the city and the city members.
So we have all this in writing or documented? Where is that at? Do you, do you have these documents?
I don't, I don't have that historical, no.
But I'm saying the documents that would support what he's saying.
I, I do not have that, no.
Let me ask you about the timeline that we're dealing with. I know it was a special meeting, and then there'll be another special meeting. So is that, what's the basis of that? What's the genesis of that?
The property owner has an opening date of August fifteenth.
Okay.
And his request was to finish his build-out. I think he still has some build-out remaining on that strip. And the determination of whether or not he can have that piece of property or have that portion of his property built out in time for his opening date or not.
Gotcha. So he, is he already building on it?
It's the, um, old old she goes, he's remodeling it now. And he has, uh, been through the NPC process and got his site plan approved, and he's under construction at this time.
And so we're cleaning up, or is this ahead of the actual, since we're a few weeks out from that day?
No, it, it, according to the property owner, it makes a material difference of whether he can build that portion of his patio area for his restaurant.
Is he, is he already building?
Not to my knowledge. He's building, he's worked on the remediation parts that are not material to this.
I happened to drive by it this morning, and I mean, it looks like, you know, they're doing all the interior renovations, and it looks like they've removed the old patio. And then, I guess they're kind of prepping to build back the new one. And I would assume they need this before they can build back the new one.
All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Thompson, is there any time or length for you to move?
Not that I know of.
You have to call him Barry White.
Yeah, you're a neat guy. I haven't looked up.
It's actually Kermit the Frog.
All right. Are there any reports from Officer Ford's office? Seeing zero. Councilman Bob?
I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments, Mr. Chairman. My first, my first one was to express my disappointment and my very deep concern regarding, uh, a resolution we passed on the previous council meeting regarding the Urban Film Festival and how, uh, I thought unfairly, uh, that, uh, that entity who we, uh, approved assistance to was treated in the media in the sense that, once this body, once this body acts, it appeared that the criticism of whatever was going to be levied should be levied to this body and not to the recipient of the actions of this body. We, we put in measures that would have protected us from being in, out of compliance with the act, with the letter of the law. And instead of us, this body being the, the, uh, the entity that receives, uh, whatever negativity that came from that action went to the party, and I thought that was very unfair, very unfair. But that's neither here nor there. I think, I think, uh, whatever happened, happened. But I, I wish, I wish our public would, and media would understand that this body is not a perfect body. But at the same time, when this body and the majority passed a resolution on ordinance, regardless of how it may reflect in the community, it was an action of this body and not of anybody else who would have been affected by the audience. Now, my other comment, Mr. Chairman, is that there was two homicides last night. I visited site of the one in my district on Gardonia this morning. Neighbors was, uh, very disturbed because, you know, I mean, this happens. And last weekend, I think the media characterized it as a very violent weekend in Shreveport. My question, Mayor, is, is, um, is in regards to these pending investigations, with so many happening and with a limited amount of, a limited amount of investig, detectives, how are these cases distributed in regards to how they have been investigated and how we can bring some resolve to some of them?
I'll ask Chief Crump if he'll come and respond.
Sure.
Can you come up, Chief Crump? And I'll just make a comment while he's coming. Some of, the major portions of some of the shootings and stabbings are in the homes.
I understand.
So we can't police somebody's household.
I agree.
And so, you know, when, you know, we buy into the media hype, what we've been trying to do, and we're going to be doing something, uh, in terms of working directly in the, in the communities, but we need people to step up. I mean, we can't be in somebody's house. The majority of these occur really inside the house. We, I mean, most of those this weekend. Now, we had one that, one on Gardonia, we don't know about, but the others were like in, in these people's homes. And so, you know, maybe you have an answer to that?
No, no, that's, and that's not my question, actually, and, and-
Well, I just, I just wanted to-
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. But I, I agree that you can't police inside of somebody's house. I agree with that. But my, my concern and my question is, I mean, the, the people I talked to up on Gardonia, my understanding was the guy was in the house, somebody drove up and said, "Hey, come here, I want to talk to you." He walked out, they shot him in the yard, and he got away. And, and I'm saying, regardless of how, of what happened, a homicide is a homicide and has to be investigated. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'm saying with, with, you don't have just a pool of detectives to investigate these crimes, do you? So how, how, those that are pending, how do you distribute those in addition to the new ones that come, come about on a, on a regular basis? How, how, how do we get to resolve some of these as, when we have to continue to pile on new cases?
Well, I mean, it's just the load that, uh, the investigators bear, but I mean, they, the investigators we have in our Violent Crimes Division of Investigations investigate more than one incident at a time. And so, uh, we have on-call investigators that, uh, any incident that, that took place on Gardonia, there was an investigator on-call to, to respond to that. And, uh, the information that was received relative to that one, we're still trying to follow the leads on, which is not that much based off the witness we've talked to thus, thus far. But, um, granted, uh, the caseloads are what they are, but we do have multiple investigators in violent crimes, and sometimes we even utilize our, uh, other investigators, maybe from, uh, from the robbery unit or sometimes even domestic violence. So, uh, it's not a matter of, of us not having enough investigators. There are some deals, when, when they happen at, at the pace that they happen sometimes, it may appear to be, be overwhelming, but a lot of times, which recently, we, we've actually made quite a few arrests on, on a lot of the homicides that have taken place. As a matter of fact, we just made one today on the one that took place on, uh, East Olive. The other gentleman came in and, uh, after interviewing with the investigators, they made that- made that second arrest and have closed that homicide out. And a lot of them have been taking place like that. The U.S. Marshals Office, um, once we, uh, get a case and develop leads, if that lead is substantial enough that we can get a warrant, uh, after submitting that information to the District Attorney's Office and we get a warrant, then we turn those cases over to the U.S. Marshal and they use their resources, uh, across the United States in apprehension. And we've been successful that way too, in actually getting people who have committed crimes in Shreveport, uh, in Florida, in Michigan, uh, other places throughout the United States. So that's a resource that, that helps us. But again, I would have to echo what the mayor says. A lot of times it's unfortunate that, uh, people know, because a lot of these crimes, the bulk of them that take place either are domestically related or sometimes the, the result of some illegal activity. And the individuals involved know each other. It's a matter of whether, uh, someone will come forward through the anonymous means that we have to, to make those reports so that we can follow those leads and hopefully make arrests.
Okay. But I wanna, I wanna stick to what I'm, and I'm gonna make my point. I'm gonna finish. Okay. There are pending homicide investigators, investigations going on as we speak. And that last night, you assumed two others. What, I know you wanna stay on a, a situation that's while it's hot, while the trail is, is warm and, and try to get as much time as you can. So I'm asking now, if there are, say, several, I, I mean, I don't know, maybe, I don't know how many, I don't know how many you got pending, but if you got several pending, you got, I don't know, maybe a dozen detectives, how, how, how much time do they put in before they say, okay, this is gonna be a pending one and I need to get on this one, or, or or do they keep working on them on a continual basis? How, how, how do that work?
How, however much time it, it takes, and, and that's not, not to be a coy or a shark, but, but they follow. Once, once we get a case, they will investigate it as far as the information takes them. And if, uh, if a case goes cold per se,
Sure.
then, then it will be set aside until some additional information comes in to continue to follow that lead as far as it goes. But while they are investigating one, if another case is assigned to them, they, they investigate those too. And it's just a matter of making, making contact, setting up interviews. And sometimes if, uh, the detectives pair up with each other, uh, and, and help and assist on cases, the sergeants that oversee those units also assist and investigate cases. So it's not that one is, is set on the back burner and is forgotten about just because another one comes in, but they do work those leads and if they need to partner up, they partner up to try to make sure that we follow a lead as far as it goes to get some actionable information to possibly make an arrest or to present something to the District Attorney's Office so that they can review and see if it fits the criteria of getting a, getting a warrant. Once that is done, then again, we, we, uh, we make that information known, uh, throughout patrol. Uh, we also pass it on if it fits the criteria for the, um, U.S. Marshals Office, we pass it on to them. Some cases may not fit their criteria, but our Office of Special Investigations works their leads and, and the contacts that they have out in the city, and we've located people that way too. So there's a combination of ways that we go about trying to apprehend somebody if we can identify a possible suspect and gain enough information to make an arrest. So, uh, there is a, uh, effort that's put forth throughout that unit to give those cases the attention that they need.
My last question is, outside, excluding the domestic one, the one, you know, boyfriend, girlfriend, family member, excluding those, have, and maybe you, you can just be limiting in what you, how you respond. Are there, do you see any connection between any of these, any random homicides, like the one that happened last night?
About the closest, I can probably reference to you something that may be random was the incident, I believe, with, with the four-year-old. Uh, that may be as close as we could get to something possibly being random or somebody that may be in their residence, uh, when somebody drives down the street and shoot. A lot of the incidences, even, uh, as the one that took place on Gardonia, once our investigators began to get leads and follow those, they usually are connected to, to somebody else. Uh, we, we have, we have not had shootings like that, uh, that have been random. Usually, some, somebody-
Substantiated.
Yes, sir. That's, that's been the unfortunate trend on those.
And if I may, I just, I just wanna make one last comment.
Uh, I know that, uh, in the last year, uh, you know, our homicide rate has really been down. And, and of course, we've brought a lot of people to justice. Those domestic-related ones, and we have, we have quite a number of those. Usually those cases you can close pretty quickly because you know who the people are. And, uh, for the others with the, you know, people that are retaliating and that kind of thing, as I follow the major notes and as I speak with the police department, uh, we're bringing a lot of those to justice also with the crime rate being down. Now, this past weekend was, was an exception. We had those two that were domestically related. Uh, but, you know, I think, um, for those of you who, uh, were able to look at what the U.S. Department of Justice, uh, David Joseph said last week, the crime, the trend is still going down. Every once in a while, you're gonna have a spike and that's unfortunate. And, uh, but the plan is working and, uh, I, I know that Chief is gonna be talking, uh, later this week about some additional things that they're gonna be doing. But just know, I think, um, according to Attorney Joseph, you were able to capture at least one hundred violent criminals this past year in one year. And you, and you brought those, got those off the street. It's, it's gonna happen, you know, it's just, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight. But we're gonna be, uh, doing a lot more with our community, uh, neighborhoods, trying to get people to talk. So I, I wanted to say that. Thank you.
And if I could just, just say one additional thing, on, on some information, we, we try, and even some of the parents, family members that I've talked to, uh, that receive information from people that say to them they, they know this or that, sometimes those leads are hard to follow because if, if somebody tells you what somebody told them and you bring that to an investigator, they're gonna have to try to make their way to where that information originated. And sometimes those people don't, don't wanna talk. And so we try to encourage them to, to utilize, uh, Crime Stoppers. It truly is anonymous. And to date, um, according to all the information that, uh, Mr. Taylor Farrow has, has relayed relative to Crime Stoppers and to the best of my knowledge, those who have participated in it have never been identified. So, uh, it really does do what it's designed to do. And if they, they might be fearful of talking to, uh, the police and not want somebody to know that the police came to their house, they can utilize Crime Stoppers and, and give that information. And at least that lead can be followed. If that doesn't happen, it's very little sometimes what we, most of the time, practically all of it, what we could do with the District, at the District Attorney's Office, uh, because it turns into hearsay. And so it's hard to get a warrant off of, off of hearsay and sometimes, uh, information is received that way too.
So, so have you, have you solved a case because of a trip, a tip from Crime Stoppers?
Yes.
I mean, a homicide?
They, they, they've solved cases that way. And many times, uh, I, I know our PIOs, especially, uh, they do it all the time, but I know things that come through Crime Stoppers, if, if it leads to an arrest, uh, they, they make note of that, uh, when they do the press releases.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have a question for you, Chief. My, mine is pretty much the same that I always ask you. So, thank you. I do have a question. Uh, Mayor CEO, maybe Mr. Woods. I got a call this morning from a, a landlord, property owner. And he was inquiring about how do we handle trees on adjudicated property? I think, uh, there's a vacant lot next to one of his rental properties in, um, in Cedar Grove. And-
Do you have an address, Councilwoman?
I think I left it on my, on my iPad. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it to you.
If you'll send it to us.
I thought I had it, but I, I don't have it on here. Okay, so his question was, this oak tree is, I think, one of the limbs, I wanna say he said it was twelve to fourteen inches in diameter and I forget how long, but it's, it's already like knocked over the fence next door. And there's another limb that he says if it, depending on which way the wind blows, it'll, it's probably gonna hit something, a person or car or some property. Um, he said he called Public Works. He did not know who he talked to. And he said he was told that they didn't have the money. And he, and they, and even then, they don't have personnel to cut down the tree of the dress.
That's not true.
The situation. Okay, but he did not have a name on who he talked to. So-
You'll send me the address. We'll take care of it.
Okay, all right.
And if you can send me his name and phone number, so we can contact him.
Okay, I have. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do you all know who the new director of Crime Stoppers is? Cause they keep saying Jim is the former director.
I haven't seen anything or they've announced anybody.
Is Chief now?
And, and, you know, they don't work for us, so-
No, I know.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Cause is it a headless organization right now or?
Chief was saying David Ebarb.
David Ebarb?
David Ebarb.
Okay.
We might wanna check with the board.
Yeah.
Cause they don't work for us.
Right, I understand. I'm just, we, 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 we work with them closely, so I just wanna-
We do.
Yeah, I just wanna know who was, who was running the ship now.
Okay. He's an auxiliary officer too.
Okay.
Apparently he's taken over.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.